Good evening. We'll call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members President, Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself Chair. Our first item is public participation. If anybody has anything for the Health and Safety Committee, I ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing nobody. You have in front of you the minutes from March 9th, 2023, the regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Young. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same. They're passed. All right, you've got in the packet the letter that was read by the clerk Tuesday with the street closings for the Cruising with the Cops car show, and it's the same closures as it was last year.
I'll make the motion as regular legislation for the Cruising with the Cops.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. McKeever and a second from Mr. Wireball to request legislation, given the street closures that the FOP union has requested. Any discussion? And that against regular legislation? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the same? I guess I'll need a form for that one. McKeever and Wireball. Okay, next, is there any open projects that anybody wishes to bring up this evening? Mr. Young?
Actually, I do have one question about the Cruising with the Cops.
Yes, sir.
If I could back up. Maybe you discussed it Tuesday. The Dora is not available during Cruising with the Cops, right?
I know we did the Brower's Festival. I don't remember if we did the car show or not.
Car show is...
I think it was okay because of the size of the crowd. I think the festival...
Okay, I just wanted to double check and let everybody know one way or the other.
Good point.
I believe the Dora was available last year for Cruising with the Cops. It was available.
It wasn't suspended, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
When is Cruising with the Cops?
June 10th.
Dora may not have actually taken effect yet last year.
It wasn't yet, yeah.
Okay.
But so...
You're thinking of the motorcycle show. They did later in the year, yeah.
Yeah.
So would it be advantageous to even mention anything in this legislation or not worry about it since it's its own?
I mean, we can put it as, put that in there that it would continue full force and factors for clarity.
Okay.
But I think, and I would have to review it. I haven't looked at it, but I think it's, Dora is like year round, and then if you specifically wanted to exclude something, we would do legislation to exclude that.
Right.
And issue notice.
Right.
That's going to be the difference.
Okay.
We may have excluded the Brower's Festival, but I don't think we did.
It was supposed to have been in the legislation. We'll have to double check that.
We'll look at it.
All right. All right, any open projects, Mr. Young?
No, sir.
Mr. McKeever?
No.
Mr. Wireball? All right, Taxi Cabs is almost done. The Law Director's Office has notified me that they'll have it hopefully by the next meeting.
Oh, we will. Yeah, I just didn't get finished with it.
Fine enough. Any public participation for the Health and Safety Committee? Again, seeing none, we will adjourn at 6:03 PM.
Buildings Committee, March 23rd, 2023.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 6:04 PM. Members Present are Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, and myself, Chair and Sheriff. Brenton Potter is absent this evening. First on the list, we have any public participation.
Well, I mean, she's on here.
Wait.
My name is Barb McCullough, and I'm here representing the Crawford County Land Reutilization Corporation, or the Crawford County Land Bank. We have a property at 214 East Perry Street that we have an approved grant from the Ohio Department of Development to demolish some partially standing buildings and dig some monitoring wells. There previously was a dry cleaner there, so we want to check to make sure there's been no ground contamination. And the policy of the land bank is not to keep the properties ourselves and not to have the property stay with the current owner. We don't want to spend grant money to take down and clean up a property and allow that to remain in the hands of the current owners. So we are asking the city to consider taking the property from us when we're finished with the grant. I guess that's it. There's vagrants in partially demolished buildings, so that all needs to be cleaned up, and it will be.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
I haven't.
So while you're thinking, if I could, are you looking for just an agreement from us? Are you looking for legislation now to accept it?
No, because the grant...
I think we don't want it until it's done.
Right, because the current owners, because of the way the grants structured, the current owners are going to keep the property. They'll donate it to the land bank. The land bank's going to get rid of all the taxes. We'll have the property cleaned up, and then we would don't, you know, we're just looking for a resolution stating the city will be accepting it. It probably is not going to be before '24 at least. So, because it might be into '24, maybe early summer before the project could be, may not be completed till then.
And you're looking for something just for your office? You don't need to present anything to Burgess and Nyipal or anything else?
No, no, no. We're just looking for, we're looking for an end user so that we know that we're not going to have to figure out...
So you need a resolution or anything? Now you just need us to say yes or no?
Um, you know, in the past, when the city has taken properties from us, the council's passed a resolution stating they're going to accept it.
I just knew it was closer to...
Yeah, and if you, you know, if you wanted to wait till closer to that point, we just thought we would feel better if we knew we had an end user, that all of this is...
That's what we're talking about.
What about a letter of intent? You could do a letter of intent maybe from the committee, and at least you have the committee's position on it, and then when it's appropriate, have the resolution drafted.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was appropriate to before they actually have it in possession. I guess that was my exact thought there.
Put that in your letter.
Yeah. We have an agreement with the current owners that they are going to donate it to us at the, at the end, so.
Yeah. And to further clarify, the owners, the middle half of them has deceased, but that was their understanding before he passed that, it was a gentleman's agreement way back when. He actually thought it had already taken place.
Oh, yeah.
So I would make a motion to request a letter of intent be drafted by the clerk on behalf of this committee stating that we would be in favor of accepting the property after the cleanup is complete, after the land bank has absolved the back taxes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Does that kind of get you where you want to be?
Yep, that's perfect.
Is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will have the letter of intent drafted, please. Thank you. We love you. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for consideration.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
All right, so then the approval of minutes from March 9th, 2023.
It's one of us.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I'll approve, or I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second them.
All right, we have a first from Mr. Wireball, a second from Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that passes the minutes. All right, do we have anything on open projects we need to talk about tonight?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Going back to the land bank, I think that you could and probably would want to do a resolution for the same thing, just so that you have a majority of council committee for the land bank purposes, and you can put all of those wherashes and upon appropriate remediation.
We do have this in another committee as well.
Yeah. I'm just thinking like, so, you know, you could have three fourths of council.
Who's the other committee that goes in front of?
Economic Development.
Economic Development, so.
But I think it's probably more appropriate for you guys to accept it out of public lands.
I think it's six of the seven of us between those two committees if both committees did that, or do you want, you think, still just pass it on full council for that letter?
Well, no, he's saying pass on a full council for the resolution, but...
But a resolution is nothing more than a letter from council showing their intent to do something or not to do something.
Do we need to actually do a resolution to pay to publish that, though, or?
Hmm. I got you. No, I mean, if you guys want to do letters from both committees, intend, and whatever, but...
Or a joint letter from both committees, as long as it passes to the other one.
Gotcha, yeah. To avoid publishing costs, that's great, but yes, I think that it carries more weight if you have at least a majority of council committed. And it would be, you know, contingent upon a vote of council at a future date, and it would also be contingent upon the land bank completely remediating any EPL issues, because that's going to be the expensive thing. If there's asbestos remediation, whatever chemicals may or may not be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just my thought. Because when you go to the land bank and they have a letter of a less than majority.
Well, in that instance, with the two committees, it'd be from six of the seven.
It's six out of seven.
Bingo.
I bet you Terry could probably write a letter, too, to be the seventh one. You're the only one that's not on those two committees, and so you could write your own letter.
So he could, or he could volunteer to sign ours or whatever, too. But, okay, so is there anything else that we have going on? Any more public participation? If not, we're going to close public lands and buildings at 6:11 PM.
Committee, March 23rd, 2023.
I'll call Plating to order at 6:12 PM. Members Present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Terry Spiegel, and myself Chair. Is there any public participation? None. We have approval of minutes, but we don't have a copy of the minutes in front of us, so we will postpone that till the next meeting. There wasn't much in it anyhow. I do want to bring up, before we go on any further, to remind everybody, there is a public hearing on Plating for April 18th at 6:00 PM here at Council Chambers. So is there anything that anybody would like to discuss from open projects?
No.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm reminding you, Dan.
I said, do you write it down?
Write it down, okay.
All right.
He was here yesterday.
Yeah, there's nothing else. Any public participation? Okay, none being. I'll adjourn at 6:13 PM.
Economic Development Committee, March 23rd, 2023.
I will call Economic Development to order at 6:14 PM. Members Present, C. Aaron Scherrick, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and I am the acting chair. Brenton Potter is absent. Is there any public participation? Okay, none being. As you can see before you, you have the copy of the minutes for this meeting. So I'll need a motion to...
I'll make a motion to accept the, or approve the minutes from March 9th.
Okay. Do I, okay, I have a second from Steve. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, Crawford County Land Revitalization Corporation. What else do we need to do?
You would also like to do a letter of intent to accept the property from the land bank after all of its remediation has been completed.
Okay.
I will make a motion to, can we just add ours to the other letter of intent and go in jointly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would make a motion to be a part of the letter of intent and offer it up to any council members who are not presented by the two groups, to sign it as well if they would like.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second what she said.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, is there any open projects you'd like to discuss? All right, is there any public participation? All right, with that, I will adjourn at 6:16 PM.
Committee, March 23rd, 2023.
I'd like to call Service Committee meeting together at 6:17 PM. Members Present are Steve Young, C. Aaron Scherrick, myself Chair. Brenton Potter is excused. Anybody got any public participation for Service Committee? Seeing none. We need to approve the minutes from the March 9th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 9th.
Aaron makes the motion. Do you need a second?
Second.
Steve seconds. All those vote, saying aye?
Aye.
Next on the agenda says Repairing City Dumpsters. Okay. The information I got from that is that the service garage down, they repair their own. They want to put some welds, some steel plates down on the bottom of them. It's going to cost $6,500, and they want to take it out of the replacement fund, so we need to just refer that to the Finance Committee since it's that, that's the emphasis, that, for them to do. I need a motion to do that.
And it's in their fund already?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will make a motion to refer that to Finance.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Aaron, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, do any of you two have anything in the open projects?
No.
We couldn't make this last a little bit longer.
No. I got to spot my drums.
Seeing none. Any more public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 6:18 PM.
Committee, March 23rd, 2023.
I'll call Finance to order at 6:19. Members Present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself Chair. Is there any public participation for Finance Committee?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Nusaris. On March 7th, 2023, ordinance number 15-2023 concerning a $90,000 appropriation was presented to council. At that time, I informed council that since the $90,000 appropriation was never referred by council to committee, the Finance Committee should not have discussed it at their February 23rd, 2023 meeting. At the March 9th, 2023 Finance Meeting, Myers and Scherrick stated that the law director made the referral in one of his law director reports when he discussed changing the splash pad from being a city project to being a Kiwanis project. Myers further stated, and I quote, "That's how I recall it, but I could be wrong. I do know that it came from the law director because that's where I questioned him about the bond. Correct us if we're wrong, but that's how I remember it," end of quote. In my researching, I found that interim law director Gernert did discuss changing the splash pad from being a city project to being a Kiwanis project, at which time Myers also questioned a surety bond. However, the discussions were done at the February 9th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting and not during the law director's report given at council. Finally, in reading and watching the 2023 council meeting minutes and videos, I find that Gernert never made a $90,000 appropriation referral. Thank you.
Any other public participation?
Mr. Wireball, I'd ask for permission, maybe readdress later.
Yeah, we have public participation at the end, too.
Okay. I'll do anything for that. If there is any comes up.
All right. We need approval of the amended minutes from February 23rd, 2022, our regular Finance Committee meeting.
That'd be 23.
23.
23, yeah. I just read what was there. Yeah, do I have a...
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we need approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2023, regular Finance Committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to repairing city dumpsters. I guess we just heard about that, and money's in the...
Replacement fund.
In the replacement fund, so I guess we just have to give us, give it our blessing and do, or make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion that we refer to the council for full approval as an emergency.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. I think this was something, we talked about this a couple years ago, I think, that we started doing that rather than...
And he said this would finish up everything they need to repair.
Yeah, this might be like the third round on that. So this isn't something new. This is, and we're actually playing for something, so. Okay, so moving right along, swimming pool. Did, what are we discussing here?
So, to a couple of my failed attempts, I really want to fund the pool. We've got the money in Fund 271. However, you know, it's not just like it's money laying there that is never going to be needed for something else. And you've got this report that was, I'm guessing, prepared by the administration.
It's for me. I'm going to read it.
Gotcha. And so valid points are mentioned. Did you want to speak on that?
Yeah.
Rather than me paraphrasing what you wrote?
Yeah, I'd rather read it. I've worked hard.
Go ahead.
Expense spending went up in the entire city by 11% from 2021 to 2022. In 2022, inflation was at 8% according to CPI data from the Labor Bureau, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Please also keep in mind the safety forces is the largest draw on the general fund, so any increase in pay affected that fund. The general fund increase between 2021 and 2022 went up 23%, and police personal spending, it went up by 11%, and fire personnel spending, it went up by 68%, and pool spending, it went up by 13%, and this year stands to increase another 24%. Last year, we spent more than we brought in, putting us, according to the State Auditor's Office, Office's Financial Indicators Report, in the range of cautionary outlook. As it stands, we do not have enough money in the fire salary account line to pay the department for the full year of their service. We're going to have to use Fund 271, the local fiscal recovery fund, or ARPA, or we will have to appropriate funds from outside the budget, which will reduce our carryover for 2024, which was $433,016.13 less than our carryover from 2021, a negative 33%. Carryover money is what the city survives on while we wait for revenue to come in throughout the year. If we reduce the carryover funds too greatly, we run the risk of having no stopgap to get us by until the tax dollars start rolling in for the current year. We cut it fairly close this year, and luckily we were able to rely on Fund 271 for the back pay this year. Keeping the money wished to be used for opening the pool in Fund 271 will not relieve all financial issues the city may have in 2024 if the safety levy does not pass nor the tax exemption is not reconsidered, but it would be a slight cushion. Ultimately, the decision to open the pool is up to council. I understand and am sympathetic to the citizens who want the pool opened, but it is my job to represent the best interests for the city's finances. With an estimated increase of $20,000 in pool chemicals this year, that is over $100,000 in fiscal recovery funds going to a leisure time activity, which does not generate enough revenue to meet half of its expense. Instead, we could use that money next year to possibly pay police and fire if the safety forces levy does not pass. Fund 271 is our safety net. It is not a large one, and it's not enough, but is what we have. Yes, the pool is one of those things that all citizens get utilized to enjoy time with their families, and yes, it is their tax dollars that fund it. It is a tough decision that you have to make, and I'm glad I don't have to make it. You are choosing between slightly more fiscal stability by having funds which may be needed to pay for safety forces next year, I believe citizens would support, or a pool this year, which the citizens will enjoy. So imagine me as the old man at the gas station warning you group of rowdy young council members to possibly rethink going to that spooky cabin with a pool. The decision is up to you, but we need to at least have a plan in case the guy with an axe shows up. And by that, I mean, what are we going to do if the safety levy does not pass?
Very good. Thank you. Yes, thank you for that. Now, so where do we go from here? Yeah, and I understand, too. We have, we've got some money sitting there. It's tough, and I, I don't, I was hoping I'd contacted the Y also, and maybe some of you have, too. I didn't hear anything come back from them. Nobody called me back, so.
One of the, one of the thoughts, obviously, I've made it a priority. I want to see us open the pool. You know, that's one of the things that we talked about, the quality of life, things that we are able to provide, and that is one of those things. She brings up valid points that I cannot disagree with any. And Mark and I talked, and he's got some further points I think might be good for this discussion.
One of, well, several of them. First, the, we don't have our former pool director. She has gained employment elsewhere due to us not...
Acting.
Acting on this, and it was already put in the budget. We were going to not have the pool, so she knew that before the end of the year. Plus, you know, right now, Kelly is the one that helps coordinate getting the lifeguards, and the ones they had last year have gained employment elsewhere, and they don't have enough time. If they were to hire somebody now, they don't have enough time to get them trained to be open by June 1st, because they have to go through the Red Cross certification. It's a whole certification to be a certified lifeguard. And that, that's the other problem. Plus, talking to Wagner and a few others about this, basically, the cost of chemicals have doubled since last year, and, you know, they didn't put an order in because we cut it out of the budget due to the finances, and the cost has gone up more since then, too, so.
My only, my only question to that, and it's not questioning you, but for the conversation, if we're going to say, well, that's the reason we don't want to do this because the costs went up, are we never going to open the pool again? Because I don't think the chemicals are ever going to come back out.
No, no, they're not.
We're going to be paying more for everything every year forever. You know, if our grandparents would have thought that way, we wouldn't have swam as kids.
That's right.
So I think where I stand on it, I'd like to move the money for the pool and put it in the administration's hands and let them at least attempt to get everything in line. And that way, we've done our job and made, and given them the tools to try to get it done, and if they can't, then so be it. The other thing is if, you know, we use the, if the levy doesn't pass, well, then maybe that's a time where you can say, well, okay, now we're going to shut the pool down, even though, you know. So I think there's a couple different options. I think for us to try to do the best we can for the community, I'd like to move it. That's where I stand on it.
Let me, let me speak on it.
Yeah.
If we would pass this tonight, it wouldn't go into effect to April, right, the middle, end of April. That's less time for them to get somebody to work for it, correct? If you pass an ordinance to transfer this money over to it. Look at that. I mean, that's only, that's only six weeks till they get to the 1st of June. They don't have time to do it.
Request legislation tonight and hold another meeting if we needed to, if that's always our intent to try to make happen.
Still, it takes 30 days for legislation to go into effect.
Not if it's an emergency, because it'd affect that minute.
Well, that's, that being, still, we don't, I don't know if there's time. I really don't. I don't, I don't want to see the pool not open. That's my theory on it, but, man, we got to get the right people. We don't want people who don't know what they're doing in there.
I get that. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think we should do our job and put it in their hands. Let them try. I don't, if we sit here and say there's not enough time, that's, we're not the ones out doing that, trying to get them.
And, well, and here's the way I look at it. And I'm not trying to throw stones or anything, but this could have been resolved. We ran into this in, what, 2013 or whenever, before the safety forces levy, when things were bad. And we talked about it at, during budget, you know, can we, can we start getting donations for it? And that's all in the administration's hands. They didn't want to do it. We can give this money to them. They don't want to do it. It's obvious, you know.
I don't think it's not, they don't want to do it. I think they looked at the budget and saw they couldn't do it at this point. Yeah.
Yeah, but I, you know, as long as I've been, as long as that administration has been there, it's always been, they just lose money, they just lose money, you know? And, you know, we don't, we were running a city. We're not running a business, so. Anyway, I mean, that's just my two cents worth. Yeah, I mean, and I think if we give them the money, they'll, you know, and what's to stop the administration if we pass it, to veto it, then it's going to push it back, just like we did before, so. And then we come back, you know? So that's just my two cents worth. You know, if anyone makes a motion, I'll, I'll ask for a second. That's all I can do.
May I ask a question of the other day?
Yeah.
The numbers that you gave me for the other day for the pool, do you feel that those are still adequate, or do those need adjusted based on what information you kind of put in your report tonight?
If the $20,000 in the pool chemicals is accurate, we would have to change that so there would be more going into the pool chemical line. And I did make a typo and put in the reimbursement to not the general fund account, the other one. So I just have to change the number there, but yeah.
Give me a moment to find my information that I need. Give me a moment to find my information that I need.
Yeah, so here's a, here's a question to throw out, we were, we were all prepared to loan the, loan the $90,000 to.
Yep.
To, to the Kiwanis, but now we don't have to do that, so, I mean, that doesn't mean we have an extra $90,000 to burn, I understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, there's, there's another.
What's the total? So, if you got a calculator, I can read through them real quick unless you've already got them all added, but it would be $40,000 for salary, $600 for telephone, $51,000 for chemicals, and $14,000 for operating incidentals.
105, 600.
So I would like to make a motion to transfer out of Fund 271, $106,000 to those lines, being the pool salary at 40,000, pool telephone at 600, the pool chemicals at 51,000, and operating incidentals at the remainder, which would end up being 14,100, you know, whatever ends up taking it to an even 106,000 dollars as an emergency.
So is that your motion?
That is my motion, sir.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Oh, okay.
No. I'm worried about, worried about us having a safety net, just wish the election was in March instead of May, and we wouldn't be wondering and.
Me, too.
And sitting on pins and needles whether it's going to pass or not.
But I don't believe that much, when will that money be available to us if we pass?
The tax will start, become effective July 1st.
Some people, on voluntary withholding, you would start to see some of that through withholding, but the vast majority would probably come in in '24 when people are filing their '23 returns. But you will see some withholding coming in this year.
From those who work like it, where at Timken and other, that they automatically, you'll see some money coming in, and, you know, other businesses that automatically withhold the W2s, we're not, but we're not going to see a large amount come in. I, I don't know. I.
I'm the same, but your, place you are, Mark, I just can't, with what Kaylee said, the auditor said, just, we don't want to go in financial emergency, be put in that by the, by the state, then the state comes in and runs the whole show, we don't want that, so. Like she said, it's, it's a tough decision to make, so.
It'd be nice if we had somebody who, or if we could raise 100,000 outside of the city.
All right, so I guess the motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on, any open projects? Okay, any more public participation?
Did you skip a phone for carrying the city dumpsters?
No, I made, Terry made the motion, I seconded that.
Oh.
Mike Hester, 130 Bramwood Street. Ladies and gentlemen, you've seen me up here before. The reason I'm here tonight, I want to compliment members of the council and our auditor. The other time I spoke up here, I told you how I felt about this council, I told you you were capable of doing it, I've talked to some of you individually. I know the feeling, Kevin, about this one pool, mine's the same, but the bottom line is, you can only do what you can afford, even our own personal economies at home. But gentlemen, I was proud to listen to you tonight. The auditor did an excellent job. I watched dollar figures come out tonight, precise dollar figures, broke down. I saw the group of you discussing this in detail, the pros and the cons. I'm going to reiterate what I said the other night, we have to count, or believe in our council members, that's who we voted to be here to take care of us. I'm going to tell you tonight from me, the citizens have a right to be proud for what they saw here at this meeting the last few minutes. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Mike. Thank you.
I'm allowed to speak, I'm not public, but I just want people to understand, I don't harbor any resentment, I know that, that we disagree, but it's nice to have healthy debate, and I consider these two friends outside of here, and I want to make sure the people watching don't think that I'm sitting here angry at them.
I want to say I want the pool not to open, let's put that way, the kids got to have something to do, there's no doubt, but we cannot.
I agree with Terry.
Don't go in fiscal emergency because of something like this, because if something else would happen, man.
Mr. Wireball, I can add one more thing. And for Mr. Spiegel, Terry and I haven't talked that much, your auditor presented you very big a thing.
Yes, yeah.
And as Mr. Wireball, remember from last year when we talked about fuel costs and budget is something that you don't get to work on week to week when you get your paychecks or even month to month. You need to look out for what's down the road in the future. Your auditor did an excellent job tonight pointing out what you've got to look forward to possibly in the early part of 2024, a year away from now. So, and I'll be honest with you, gentlemen, if I was a rich man, working for the county, you don't get that way, I would reach in my pocket, pull up my checkbook, and write you checks for this wonderful pool. That's how bad I'd like to see the kids have a pool. But we all do things with our own kids. Yeah, we want to go to Disney World this year, kids, but I guess the only money we have, we can go up to Cedar Point. But anyways, the, I want to compliment the auditor. I really liked the way she looked out for you guys for the future. This is what we have now, but this is what I'm looking at where we might be a year from now, so I'll leave it with that.
All right.
I, I'd like, I agree with Kevin, we, I'd really love to have that pool open, I know all of us would, but.
Right, well, we talked about it at budget, you know.
Yeah.
At budget, we said, hey, you know.
It's not an easy thing.
What can we do, but like I said, that's where I'm, I said, it's, okay, enough said. I guess I'll adjourn at 6:41.